Sure. Yeah.
Amen.
Alright, waiting for...
No, no. We do the...
Today, as this session opened, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serve in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for the direction will lead us, our city, to be strong and unify. May we continue to be, may we continue the legacy of our founder. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for all, just special blessing on all those who have worked to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please pledge to the legend. I pledge to the five United States of Minnesota, to the republic of Richmond, St., One Nation Under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for... Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Malinazzo.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras. Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. We have the minute from the Environmental and Flood Service Subcommittee on October 23rd and City Council. Oh, I forgot. I do apologize, Counselor Mercier, that you mentioned to me that you have a moment of silence?
Yes, that's okay.
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for William Judge Kumenzellis, who lived his entire life in Lowell and graduated from Lowell High School. Bill proudly served his country in the United States Army Air Corps during World War II. He worked most of his adult life as a heavy equipment operator at Fort Devens in Air Mass. Bill was married to Claire Marie, his devoted wife, until she passed away in 1995. Together, they built a loving foundation for their six children, John, Michael, Nicholas, Gia, Tony, and Lee. As a young father, Billy was involved in youth sports. He was active in youth baseball and served many years. He coached his sons in AYO, the Acre Youth Organization. For many years, he was an active member of and contributed to the Lowell Boys Club and was awarded a Lifetime Achievement Award for his community service work at the Boys Club. He was predeceased by his son, Michael, who died in 1980 at the age of 25 in Okinawa, Japan, while serving in the United States Navy. He also leaves behind many grandchildren and one great-grandchild. He will be truly missed. I'd like to also offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who have passed away since our last council meeting. They will be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mercier, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for James G. Kula Harris. James Kula Harris, 80 of Drakken, died Wednesday, October 24th. He was the son of George D. and Stella Kula Harris. He attended the Lowell Schools, graduate of Lowell High School, class 1956. He also attended University of Maine at Orno. Jim proudly served his country as a member of the U.S. Army Reserves and the National Guard. In addition to his, he survived, excuse me, um, lost my place. He was the beloved husband of Janice Kula Harris, who survives him and whom they would have celebrated their 57th wedding anniversary this April. In addition to his wife, Janice, he is survived by two sons, George Kula Harris of Lowell and Michael Kula Harris of Amesbury. He'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy. Counselor Malinazzo.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chambers for the 11 victims that were killed in the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh and to really, I guess, try to articulate how important it is for the first responders when they do arrive on scene like that. Two of the police officers were shot and recovering thankfully, but really, it's incredible to think that such tragedy like that could happen. I just like to offer that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Malinazzo. I believe the rest of the council and just about everyone in this city will join you in that praise. So, to pay our respect, please, Doctor Chambers. Clerk, we have a minute from the Subcommittee Environmental and Flood Issues dated October 30, or 23rd, and City Council minute October 23rd for acceptance. You are here. Move to accept and place on file, Mr. Chair. Except by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Conway. The minute is passed. We have communication from the City Manager, Madam Managers. First in business is the issue with Andover Street sidewalk improvement. That's Counselor...
It was Counselor Mercier and Counselor Conway. It was a joint motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Conway, want to be heard on that?
I'll let Counselor Mercier first.
Counselor Mercier, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I truly appreciate that the, uh, the response to this motion was very quick, but if, do we have, through you, Mr. Vice Mayor, to the City Manager, do we have a timeline on when those repairs could probably start? I know that when I made the motion along with my colleague, I asked it, I knew how expensive it was. I knew that we couldn't get these repairs done probably right away, no doubt about that. Do we have any timeline for when we might start? I know it says multiple years. Do we have any timeline?
Commissioner Donison had looked at this matter, and Commissioner, I know you did say in your report several years as well as allocating a specific amount each year. Do you have an estimation as to how long this will take?
So, the intent is to start the work in next fiscal year. So, it would be to take the money from the next year's $3.2 million, assuming that's what the city's going to appropriate as part of the next year's budget. We do get the $1.9 million as part of Chapter 90 and the $1.2, I think, from the city. So, the intent would be to plan it to happen after July 1st of next year, at least the first phase of Andover Street, and then engineering will be working on determining the exact scope of work for it, so we'll have a better idea, oh, probably in a month or so, say in a month, as far as the number of years that this would take. We are going to be doing a couple of small area repairs. The city engineer, Christine Clancy, marked them out today because we have this, this product called flexible pavement, and we're going to place it around a couple of the tree locations. So, we're going to be doing that in the next few weeks, but that'll be very minor.
So, thank you. Everything that you told me, could you put that down in like a schedule of, you know, like a timeline report as to, you know, when this could happen and what you told me, could you put it in writing?
Sure. I can report back to you when we have a better idea of what the total costs are.
Okay. And we'll give you an updated report once they've been able to scope it out. I see the city engineers here nodding their head. So, we'll keep you posted in terms of...
Sure, thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the City Manager, is, and by the way, I want to thank you people for putting this, this together. I think it's extremely important. Is this correct? Next year, it's $100,000. Is that what is being allotted for that Andover Street project?
That's the plan that the Commissioner and the engineer came up with. Obviously, there are many sidewalks throughout the city that also need attendance, but given the scope of this project, it's a very large street. It has a lot of repairs needed to start phasing in repair, and that's something that the engineer, city engineer and the Commissioner will be working on.
Would you, would you, would they start with the handicap accessibility first? Is that how they, because it's, you know, most of those streets are not accessible to the handicap. Would that be the first...
So, there's, there's a grant that's been applied for, for the ADA, planning of ADA, but I think what we can do is give you a more detailed aspect. I suspect, based on my conversations, the worst areas will be addressed first, and so we can give you the, not only in terms of the scope, but the phasing of that.
The ADA Transition Plan Grant, what, how much is that, do you know?
We don't have, we haven't received it yet. And what was the application for, Jim?
I think it was $50,000 was the grant.
Did we have this last year, this grant?
I couldn't...
I don't know. I don't think we have.
I think this is the first, the first time that we're applying, yeah. And also, our Disability Commission Counselor, as you know, is also participating in that grant process, the application process.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Mr. Donison, before you...
Commissioner.
I have a couple of questions through you. So, this was a good report, and we're going to get started on the sidewalks, but I just want to make sure that we include, like, the overall street. So, I know this year, we didn't, really didn't do any work on Andover Street, but there are holes in the cement, right? And I'm sure you're aware of it.
On Andover Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it's going to get worse over the winter, so, and I know that, you know, ideally, we'd like to dig up a hole square, but what do we do with all those little pockets of holes all over the place?
So, the pockets of holes, if we have, we can, we can take a walk or we can take a, an assessment on it with our Streets Department, and if necessary, we can patch it with the Tumulus pavement. It's going to be too late, really, to go out there and start patching up the concrete, knowing that it's possible we'll be ripping it out in a few years. So, at least this would be an inexpensive approach that wouldn't be a wasted, wasted approach.
Okay. And if we, when we take a look at that, so, a few years ago, it's all new people here again, but we had a motion on it, it was Counsel Mercy's motion, that would, that nobody's allowed to put asphalt back on Andover Street where the cement is.
Within the roadway?
Yeah.
Oh, is that what you're referring to, the roadway or the sidewalks?
Well, the road, I'm looking at the roadway. Because the roadway, we have pockets of, we have holes all over the place, and they're just going to get worse over the winter. So, we have to make sure that, you know, we're maintaining the road. We can't just wait every 10 years when we get a pocket of money. But the asphalt thing has really been bugging me because we put in a motion and the council supported it, yet like this year, there's a huge patch, maybe by Butmann Road or Wentworth Road, and, you know, National Grid was supposed to come back last year and cement it, and they never did. And I know now it's too late, but, you know, there's not supposed to be any asphalt on that roadway. We got to make sure that we hold National Grid or whoever digs up the road to come back and fix this stuff. When Dave Daley built a couple of houses, we held him to task, and he had to bring on cement truck and repatch the road. So, I just want to make you aware of it. Maybe you're not aware of it, but there are a few holes out there. If it's not too late in the season, we should take a look at them so they don't get worse over the winter. You know, good-sized chunks, 10, six-inch holes in the cement, so, just so, you know, again, we don't let things go every 10 years and...
So, yes, we'll do an assessment of, of Andover Street, the roadway part of it in the next couple of weeks, and we'll use our judgment as far, as far as how we're going to repair it. And yes, I'm aware of the, the fact that any repairs to the road need to be concrete as far as the long term, and we'll pull the permits out for National Grid and find out the few that you're referring to and find out, and get a commitment from them that they're going to replace the pavement with concrete.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Through you to the City Manager. Madam Manager, you know, I'm not sure whether you'd have this answer, of course, but I'm glad that Counsel Leahy brought this up with, with the holes on Andover Street. Well, where were we all summer long? You know, what were we doing all summer long? And, and we're waiting until the last minute to have this done, where you just said, well, hopefully, we can put something before the winter. Well, what about the three months or four months prior to that? You know, those holes were still there.
I can respond. I don't have a very good response for you, but the fact that we need to have, we need to have a, next year, for example, in response to your, is to allocate a certain number of dollars per year to Andover Street. I know there was, well, I think it was two years ago that the city spent $1 million on the concrete repairs for Andover Street at certain sections.
Yeah, and, and you know, that, that's a good point that you brought up because all summer long, I think there were only two or three slabs that were put in there. And I'd say to myself, why, why has it taken so long to put these slabs in? Well, maybe it does take a long time to put them in, but yet, obviously, towards the end, just before the winter starts, they probably put in 10 or 15. And I'm saying to myself, why didn't they start this at the beginning of the summer? And they would have got this, they would have got probably the whole thing taken care of at that point.
Are you referring to Andover Street slabs?
I am.
Yeah, I'm not, I, unfortunately, I...
I'm not the side, I'm talking about the Andover Street itself, not the sidewalks.
Unfortunately, I, I can't speak to that.
We can, we can look into this, I mean, and get you a report, Counselor. I mean, we don't have an answer right now, but we can get a report to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Donison. Next, on the motion respond, City Hall Pedestrian Safety, Counselor Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I am impressed, Madam Manager, to know that I've made, I get four responses to four motions right down in a row. I think this is marvelous. I'm, I'm very, very grateful. So, I'm glad to see that this discussion came up about safety in front of City Hall. We did have a person that really got severely injured, disabled, in fact, lost her job here because she couldn't come back to work. When we talk about signage, signage is useless. That's why the state doesn't honor those "Go Slow Children" signs anymore, because people don't read these signs. Speeders don't care about it. So, but when you see something visibly lit, like flashing lights, people do consider that. People do wand, with that, and they do toe the line and try to do the best that they can to honor those flashing lights. And I'll tell you, like, Andover Street, the flashing light is working. In front of the senior center, the flashing light is working. So, if we could get something like that around here, flashing light to let people know that people are crossing, traffic vehicular vehicles know that something's flashing, they're going to honor it. So, that we expect to hear about funding in mid-November, that's good. So, that'd be good that we start something, or there's discussion going on. I'm happy about it.
And Counselor, it is a very serious problem. We, we witness it almost on a daily basis, that, especially employees, anybody, but employees coming up, crossing the street, it's, are taking their life in their hands many mornings. And I know Natasha Vance is here. We recognize the seriousness. Obviously, a MassWorks grant has been applied for, but we're trying to address both short-term and long-term, and I don't know whether you have any further questions, but it is very, it is a very serious area to try and cross.
People, people leaving here at a certain time, that the public is getting, getting out of work and wanting to go home. These two people, these two entities is like water and oil. It's just tough.
Yeah, no, I agree absolutely. And, and you are entirely correct that signage is not a really, I mean, it helps a little bit, but the most effective thing for crosswalks to make drivers notice that someone is crossing is either an elevated crosswalk or a flashing light.
Absolutely.
Those are, yeah. And that's not a good location for an elevated crosswalk, obviously. So, I agree that that's the most appropriate, the only issue is that it's expensive, and we have to find, yeah.
It's expensive, but we need to save people's lives.
I am fully in agreement that pedestrian safety is very important.
If we could find money, like, through grants or something to make that happen, and later on, you'll hear on the agenda all the good work that Mary Ann Belada is doing in the Police Department to find grants. We need someone in the city to find those grants to put the lights that we need. And I don't mean streetlights, I mean, like, flashing lights to let people know that once someone is on a crosswalk, you, you got to stop and let them by. You got to be courteous. There's no way that we know how to instill courtesy in drivers. We just can't figure that out. But if we have flashing lights instead of a sign that says pedestrian crossing, nobody's going to read it, but you're right. And, and there's discussion here, so we need, when I come into this building and people are telling me that they're petrified crossing the street because traffic vehicles don't stop, I understand that. So, that's what we got to look out for to help people and save lives. Thank you very much.
I agree.
The third motion respond is Dutton Market Street Crossing, Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. So, thank you for the response, and since you're up there. So, what do you, what do you think would be the best solution over there?
I do think a leading pedestrian interval would be a good option. I actually talked to one of the city electricians today. He's got to call into the, you know, we have different traffic signals and different traffic controllers all over the city, so we just have to make sure we can program that one to add. So, basically, you would have an all-red, and then the pedestrians would get a three-to-five second head start in this direction before they, before cars got the green light. And it would just, because the pedestrians would already be in the crosswalk part of the way across, they would be more visible to cars. It just makes it, them, them more visible. That's not a great location for an exclusive ped, exclusive pedestrian phase, so I wouldn't recommend that. In the meantime, we can put up the, so the signs that are out there right now, I don't, if you've been in that intersection, they're very small, and they're actually kind of like hidden behind other signs. So, I think it might be helpful to put the bigger signs that have the high neon-green visibility like the, like I put in the motion response, in the meantime, until we can figure out if we can reprogram that light.
Okay. Does that mess with the traffic when they're trying to occasionally try to get everybody out of the songus?
You know, it'll add a five-second, a three-to-five-second delay on each phase, so you'd be adding a 10-second delay to the entire cycle. I think that's well worth it.
Do the lights catch up? Like, are they on a cycle, so if you do have a pedestrian crossing, but then nobody crosses for five hours, do the lights catch back up? You know, they are synchronized, aren't they?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that, our lights are not all interconnected, so they, they can be synced, and sometimes they need to be tweaked to, to resync them, and, but connecting all the lights in the city would be a really great thing. That would really help in terms of, but that's a big project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. Third motion respond has to do with commercial vehicle parking. If they could ask Superintendent Richardson to give a synopsis of his report to the manager, please. Superintendent?
Good evening. This has been an issue that's popped up a couple of times at various neighborhood meetings, a concern of these commercial vehicles parking inside of our smaller neighborhoods across the city. And the issue really is not only the parking, but the fact that they're taking up the sidewalks, where they park on the sidewalks. We just had another complaint of something we thought we addressed already. We've spoken to the man, and we had to go back there again today. So, I know that parking is tight in some of these neighborhoods across the city, but we'll just have to continue to enforce it and, and teach them that this is what they can't do. And we've instructed the officers assigned to patrol to make sure that they pay attention to these vehicles. We provided them with the ordinance, you know, this ordinance has been around for a long time. We put it in our DHQ, so the officer will be able to read this all the time, and just to have them keep it in the back of their minds that it's their responsibility to kind of address this issue instead of us waiting to hear from complaints from neighbors, our neighborhood groups.
Any question for this superintendent? Counselor Elliott?
Chief, does it make sense on a monthly basis to, I mean, we don't want to give tickets to people, but it seems that if you don't give tickets, they're just going to continue to park.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, is there, you know, once a month, does, do the officers go out and, you know, do a surveillance, whether it's just here or there, or, I mean, I think it's important if they see it to do it. I don't, I feel that if we don't take it, then people just ignore it and, you know, take the chance and park on the sidewalks. And it, not only isn't it convenient, it's an ADA issue, but it also, you know, the city spends a lot of money on, on maintaining sidewalks, so, like you said, rather than just calling all the time, and I was one of them that called. I mean, they were, you know, parking right on the sidewalk, and it was an abandoned car and not registered, so, does that make some sense on a...
No, absolutely. I think that was the issue with this last gentleman that I got a phone call today about that, you know, the officers went over and they're trying to be fair, you know, the guy's trying to make some money or whatever, he needs that truck to make money, but he disappeared for two weeks, but now he's back at it again. So, I think that we need to take it to the next level, and I've actually instructed crime analysis to, to let's look at this for a month and see how many tickets we wrote and see what effect it has. And if this is the way we have to go, then that's what we'll do, because, I mean, not only is it cause of parking, but my biggest fear is the people that have to walk off that sidewalk to step around. I mean, there was a woman in Sunnerville a couple of years ago that would call all the time about cars parked up on the hill, and she'd be out walking her kids with the carriage, so it's, you don't want people stepping around cars, especially with everybody out there texting and driving and everything else that's going on.
No, good point. That's good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Next motion respond has to do with Mount Hossback Unit. Counselor Elliott and Counselor Mercier. Counselor Mercier?
The reason I made this motion is because when I saw the trouble that was happening after Lowell High School was, the students were leaving the high school and getting out to go home, and I seen that all the trouble that had caused, and I see every day, a complement of police officers downtown. I thought that this might be a way to solve it with the horses. Now, I know that it's very, very expensive, and it's probably not financially feasible. So, what I'm saying is, it's nay, nay with the horses, right? So, be that as it may, I understand that. I just, I just tried to figure out if we could do that, but I guess we can't. Expensive, and, so, at least, at least we got an answer.
Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, no, it, it was just an idea, crowd control downtown. It does work. Unfortunately, like everything, it comes with a cost that we just can't afford right now. To you, Madam Manager or the chief, short of getting horses now, what is the best, best method of crowd control? So, if, I say if this happens, and I'm sure that high school are taking actions, but...
Well, we, first thing we started to do was work with the kids at the high school to try to get them in and get them involved in some... to try to get them in, and get them involved in some restore of justice, and try to curb their behavior. So we addressed that. Then we went to the next step and increased our presence downtown even more. And I've been getting a lot of compliments about how people are feeling being downtown in the morning when they're going into work and when people are leaving in the afternoon. So, as our next reorganization, that's going to be part of our full-time plan, to have those people down there, because we want people downtown to feel safe. We want them to feel that they can walk to their cars and walk out to lunch and not be bothered. So we implemented that. We're also trying to, we had a meeting today again, and we're gonna reach out for the young kids that were involved through Teen Block. We're gonna have a coffee with cops with them coming up on November 7th, and we're gonna have some discussions about proper behavior, and what they should expect from us and what we expect from them. And those conversations are gonna continue with some of our younger officers and try to build some relationships with them. So next time there's something that flares up like this, there's gonna be a personal connection with the police and these kids. That's what needs to happen. And hopefully, we'll be able to, because that's what's missing that day. We didn't have a connection with those kids. So we need to build that connection. We've done a great job of building relationships with, I'd say, a good 75% of the people that pay taxes in the city, but I think somehow or another over the years that we kind of fell off the younger generation. And I think now with, considering the climate in this country with the police and young people, I think it's important that we build that relationship. So, that's what we're gonna work towards.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
That's a good plan.
Next motion-
Mr. Vice.
Up, side. Counselor Conway, go ahead.
Right. Thank you to the police chief. I think it was actually a very good motion, by the way, and I want to compliment Counselor Mercier on it, because I was at the high school for a number of years, and the horses were there, and there was no doubt about it, that it worked, and it was great crowd control. But it's too bad the cost, the cost is probably prohibitive the way it is now. The question I have for you is, do police departments use dogs for crowd control? I mean, we know that they use them for drugs and ammunition and guns and so forth. Do they use them, do they use them at all for crowd control?
Yes. I think history will show that they've used it for crowd control in the past. I would kind of shy away from that. And we have used them pretty effectively downtown at the closing time for the bars. We would not take the dog out of the vehicle, we would leave him in there. But just the fact that when people step out of these bars and they hear that canine barking, they know that no matter how drunk the other dog's not gonna argue with them, the dog will do what it has to do. So it actually had a great effect on people leaving downtown right away. And that's part of the reason we bought this new canine, to have him on the midnight shift. And, but it's a tool, but I wouldn't want to see it in a crowd lunging at people. So, but we'll use it judiciously.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
And another matter, Chief, if you could address, you've spoken in the past about using bicycles in terms of crowd control, and police are trained in that technique as well?
Right. When they had the incident up at Amherst a couple of years back, some gentleman named Ed Davis had did a study up there, and they talked about using these mountain bikes, almost like a moving fence. You could put 10 or 12 in line, and basically try to separate the crowd from them fighting with each other or move them in a certain direction. Like, if they would, that's how they did Amherst the next year, when they tried to move into different parts of the campus, they would basically use these bikes, almost like horses, and they would fan out, and basically, the only way the kids would get through is they'd knock the officers over. And if they did that, then they'd be arrestable, they know that. So we would just kind of fence them in that way. And the officers in Lowell are trained. We're gonna retrain them again in the spring to make sure they're all set with it, and check our equipment. But that's something that if we, you know, had some information that there could be a problem downtown, we could put these bikes downtown at a moment's notice. We wouldn't have to clean them and dress them and all the stuff like the horses, but...
It's a great idea.
Thank you, Chief. Next motion respond is North Common Basketball Court Bench, Counselor Mercier and Counselor Elliott. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you very much for this response. This measure did address the motion when they talked about getting four athletic benches there in the next few weeks. So I really, truly appreciate it. And the motion says for the children, but I'm concerned about the parents too, because when Counselor Elliott and I were up there on a particular open house to the opening day, we did see parents with their children sitting on the ground. And it bothered me to see that. I don't know why we couldn't have had benches, but if we're gonna get four benches, and we're gonna change, chain them to the fence, that's beautiful.
I could be, and let me just ask Commissioner Johnson, there was, at one of the courts, you moved the concrete benches outside of the basketball court. Is that the site, or was that a different one?
That is correct. That's the same site. Since that time, those benches have been just moved at a different location.
So that parents could sit on those outside of the basketball court?
Well, I looked at it last week, and I didn't see the benches on the exterior of the basketball courts. I mean, they, we moved it, I think, to different locations within the park. But that's a possibility.
We could look into putting some, if we have those extra concrete benches outside of the basketball court area.
Well, the AYO, the Acre Youth Organization, they meet at the North Common, and they have benches in the inside. I would think to ask the people that are, the coaches there, what do they think? You know what I mean? Maybe we could ask them, where would you like them? Because they're the ones that are there, they oversee everything, they would know better where those benches should go. I don't have a problem with putting them inside. Counselor Kennedy was there as well, and we could see the parents there, you were there. There's enough room to put them inside. They wouldn't be bothered on the court. They wouldn't have, be interfering.
Madam Manager?
Well, we moved them, Counselor, Keith Rudy asked us to have them moved outside.
Oh, did he ask outside?
Yeah, he was concerned about the safety of kids playing basketball.
Oh, all right. Well, whatever he said.
The makeup of the bench. So, that's when we moved them, when Keith asked us.
Oh, that's all right. He would know exactly where they should go.
We can look into some seating for families or parents outside of the athletics.
He would know. Wherever he decides is all right with us. That's good. Thank you so much. I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, you're all set? Counselor Elliott, you're all set?
All set.
Thank you. All right. motions to accept, oh, there's one more, one more, you're right. Information report from the manager. Madam Manager, would you like to report on it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we included in the packet, the city was recently awarded a COPS grant. This is a, from the Department of Justice, COPS Stop School Violence Prevention Program in the amount of $471,065. And this was a joint effort between the school department and the police department applying for this. Mary Ann Bellata did file this application and, again, worked closely with the school personnel. And so we are very pleased to receive the grant. It's specific, it's over a two-year period, it does require a city match. There's certain things that the grant monies can be used for. We're in the process of studying that together with our school counterparts, to see how best these funds can be utilized. But it's a great thing for the city to have received this money. It was the first time we applied for the grant, and so, as I said, it'll be spread over a two-year period. And the money was available this month, is that right, Connor?
Yes.
So we included the details of the application for the council, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm not questioning this. I'm just saying that when we have people that work in the city, and they're worth their weight in gold, this woman, Mary Anna Bellata, unbelievable, the grants that she writes. It pays for many salaries, the money that she brings into the city. And I just wanted to publicly thank her. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to move that we accept the motion responses from the city manager and place them on file.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Conway. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
No call needed. All right, thank you. Next is communication-appointed, zoo author to the Election Commission. Do I hear motions to-
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Second, second Counselor Conway. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Vice Chair Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yes, I just wanted to say that Zoe is here, and if the council would like to hear from her, we're very grateful for her accepting.
Ms. Author, come on.
Just wanted to say thank you, I'm City Manager and the City Council, for the opportunity to serve on the Election Commission. I'm truly humbled and I'm very honored. I'll put my best foot forward and apply effective effort as I do most things that I undertake. And, you know, I live by the motto, be the change that, you know, you desire to see. And I intend to do just that. And thank you again.
Thank you. We thank you, Ms. Author, for your willingness to serve the city. Thank you. So next is a vote from the city manager, vote to apply, accepted, expand, $182,0400 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs for Council on Aging. Waive full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to apply for and accept expand a grant from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs in the maximum amount of $182,400 for the continuing employment of staff, as well as funding various supply equipment maintenance for use by the City Council on Aging. Do I hear motions to-
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Move to adopt, second, second by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Mercier?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Noon.
Here. Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. Next is vote to, vote approval and endorsement of city efficiency plan for the city of Lowell. Waive full reading, second reading by title. Approve and endorsement of the energy efficiency plan from, for the city of Lowell. A motion to adopt.
So moved.
Counsel Milonazzo, second by Counselor Cirillo. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. Vote to authorize city manager executive license agreement, 16 Jackson Street, overhanging sign, waive full reading, second reading by title. Clerk, thank you. Authorize the city managers to enter into a license agreement with Mathai Romus of the Law Department, Mathai Romus and Casal Blanca Realty Group, Inc., to encroach up on the city of Lowell properties at 16 Jackson Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Move to adopt. Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Conway, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. Next is vote to authorize city manager into MOU with the memorandum of agreement, understanding between the city of Lowell, oh, sorry, my apology, memorandum of MVEA Unit C 7.1.18-6.30-20, waive full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city council to ratify and approve the executive of city, by the city manager memorandum of understanding between the city of Lowell and the MVEA inspector unit, inspector unit covering the period of July 1st, 2018 through July, June 30, 2020. Move to adopt.
So moved.
Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Conway, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Question?
Counselor Leahy, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. How many people are in this union, or unit, do we know?
Madam Manager?
All right. And this is health and, sorry, this is health and?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And do we, I know we're looking at it, but do we have any definite plans to increase the number in the, we always need more inspectors, so are we?
We don't have any immediate plans for increasing at the moment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cirillo.
Hi, yes. I just wanted to say that you had mentioned June 30th, 2020, it's 2021, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Counselor Cirillo. All right. Next is-
You'd need a roll call.
Roll call, I do apologize. Go ahead.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Mayor Samaras, you wanna take the podium back?
No problem.
I guess so.
What's next?
Yep, yep.
I want to thank the Vice Mayor. We're now at 4.5. Vote authorized to execute an MOU with the Merrimack Valley Employees Association. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city council to ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lowell and the Merrimack Valley Employees Association, Unit C, covering the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. Need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counselor Milonazzo. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, any discussion?
We just had a roll call vote on memorandum of understanding, MVEA inspectors. This is Unit C. Who's Unit C? Who are these people?
I'm sorry, Madam Manager?
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Unit C is comprised of a number of employees in supervisory positions throughout the, throughout the city. Some of the folks that are like working foreman in the Public Works Department, as well as some other sort of mid-level supervisors are Unit C.
And who's Unit D?
Unit D is also sort of a supervisory union. It includes some library employees, but those are, I believe, some of the like office supervisors in some of the departments, assistant department heads, I believe, fall under the Unit D category.
They aren't all in one department, but over several different departments, but of the same category in terms of supervisors.
Okay. Thank you.
All set? Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. Next is vote to authorize the city manager to execute an MOU with, again, the Merrimack Valley Employees Unit, Unit D. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorize the city council to ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lowell and the Merrimack Valley Association, Unit D, covering the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. I need a motion to accept. Madam, Counsel Mercier, second by Counselor Cirillo.
May I?
Comment?
Sure. Through you, the manager. So Unit D is who again, though?
Well, those are also supervisors. The solicitor, it's sometimes it gets, sometimes they come in and negotiate together in representation, sometimes they don't. But they are also supervisors, but in different departments.
Okay. I just noticed, so on this one, there's no weather stipend, so they?
It would, so it would be because that isn't something that they are involved in doing. And so it would depend on their particular jobs or duties. So, the weather stipend, we tried to get parity between unions where they were, their duties were weather affected for instance, they may not be directly weather impacted.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, next, ordinance was from the City Manager. Ordinance, create a new position and salary of Syringe Collection Program Coordinator at the Health and Human Service Department. I need a motion to refer to the public hearing on November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen at seven P.M.
So moved.
By Counsel Cirillo, second by Counsel Conway. Thank you. Next, we have a report on the Financial Subcommittee joint with Lowell School Committee Finance Subcommittee of October thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Counsel Elliott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Subcommittee met again, this is the third time, and we meet every other week to continue to look, look at the school committee budget, but also on the city side as well, to, to identify the deficits and where there are savings and how we can close the gap. And there was, it's a meeting that, that we, we learn more from, you know, the mismanagement on the, on the cities, on the school committee side and, and how that gap is going to be closed. So we, we know that we've heard lots about the food service, but lots of the discussion focused this evening, just an hour ago, on the transportation. And those costs are expected to increase exponentially next year, in large part because of the change in time from the charter schools. The school committee is in the process of working with UMass Lowell and doing analysis of the impact of vacating the desegregation order and going to neighborhood schools, what the impact is, what the plan will be. It will take some time. The expectation for that plan is in, in January. But the transportation is significant. It was a significant, one of the significant increases contributing to the two point six million dollar deficit that the school department is faced with. Some measures that the superintendent looking at, a number of positions have not been hired. There is an expectation that those positions that are currently funded in the budget, that will not be, that will not be hired or funded, could amount to between five and six hundred thousand dollars to contribute to that deficit. The school, the food, excuse me, the food service offsets, there's no way out of it. The city is responsible for close to two million. The state, the, the only good news is that the state did give reprieve of reimbursing the state five hundred thousand dollars over a four-year period. They will not require that, that is done this year. That would only add to the two point four million dollar deficit. So that's really a report. Moving forward, we have not scheduled a, another meeting. We will meet in January because those transportation costs are, they are going to be, they are significant and they will add to the deficit moving forward. While the total deficit known was six point eight million for, for this fiscal year, because of additional revenue, additional state aid, the deferred payment plan from the state, the remaining deficit is at two point four million. Now, there is, there was, you know, a quester implication that this meeting was going to, the, the school department is looking for additional money. And I think the manager and members of the Subcommittee made it clear at the outset, we have significant financial obligations on the city side. We adopted a budget based upon the premise and the approved budget from the school committee. There is no more money on the city side. We're looking to close the books. We're looking to hopefully, to hopefully get good news from the Department of, Department of Revenue on, on free cash to balance our, our books. By the same token, I think the manager brought up a good point. We have spent millions and we have millions to continue to spend to improve the conditions of the schools. So as I mentioned in the Finance Subcommittee, I think it's important for the people at home to know, we've met our obligation. We exceed our obligation. We continue to invest in the education, certainly from the cash contribution that we make, also the maintenance of effort, but also the improvements that we have made and that we will continue to make. So that is a report of progress. And, you know, lastly, you know, seventy-five to eighty percent of that budget is salaries. It's over a hundred and twenty million of a hundred and sixty million dollar budget. Approving a nine percent, three percent, three-year, nine percent raise, that is the contributing factor. Costs are going up. There's only so much money the city has. There's only so much that we're going to get from the state, which were increases, by the way, over the last five fiscal years. And that, that's where the, that's where, you know, we can, we can look at all of these other issues, which are important, but the big, you know, the big cost, the big contributing factor is that raise. So, and, and I understand that was a decision, but we've got to live within, we live within our means. We're adopting budget, we're adopting collective bargaining agreements that we budget for and, and we can afford. And I appreciate the unions and the manager negotiating that because that's, that's good fiscal management. That's how you adopt a budget to live with your means. You can't adopt a budget that you can't, a collective bargaining agreement that you can't afford. And to me, that's where, that's where the big issue is, not only this year, but even moving forward. So there are some challenges ahead that the school department has. I hope we made progress on, on transportation. It'd be nice to get reprieve from the state from this two million, but it doesn't look like it's going to happen. And moving forward, we're going to have to tighten belts and, you know, look at positions, as was, you know, when a member got up and said, now, two point five million, that is, that's positions. Well, that should have been thought ahead before contracts were adopted that we can't afford. And I know, we sat there for two years and we held the line on, on, because we couldn't afford certain contracts. So moving forward, we will work with the school department. We have, and we'll continue, continue to do that. Education is of paramount importance. We all know that. That's, that's the report of progress on this. There's not another meeting scheduled, so.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. By Ms. Leahy, second by?
Can I just comment though, too?
Conway. Leahy.
Thank you. I just want to, a couple of observations I would make, though, too, is that I'm sure that the raises had something to do with that, but, you know, from being on the school committee for ten years and observing and having kids in the system, you know, I, the raises definitely don't help. But the mismanagement over the last three years is really a sham here. This is, this is what, you know, mistakes over the last six years with hiring people that cannot come into the City of Lowell and run the school system. And the way the last administration handled their finances by doing creative financing and shuffling money around and not telling the school committee and, you know, people really having to look through the budget to find footnotes. I mean, that was a big contributor, contributing factor to this mess. I think that the school committee has been doing a pretty good job living within their budget. There are mistakes, you know, throughout the years, maintaining the biz, the buildings and, you know, not maybe keeping up with best practices in education, but, you know, now we're in a real mess. And I think that the school committee and the school system, they're going to have to take a look at how they do business, you know? If they, normally they have four assistant superintendents, well, they're going to have to maybe deal with two and, and so on down the line. But this is affecting the kids in the classroom, and this is a real shame. I don't think we can blame it just on solely one thing. It's just a bad series of, of decisions made throughout the years, and we find ourselves in this mess now. So I just think, you know, to, I, I think it's a little unfair to just blame it all on the raises, but I do think that it's just a series of poor, poor decisions over the last few years. And I'll just say one other thing, you know? When we do these, these contracts for superintendents or whoever that comes into schools, you know, there's got to be, you, you have to do the work, perform, or you don't get paid. And to have to buy people out of contracts is a joke. You know, when people screw up, they should be held accountable.
Mr. Kennedy, Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did the School Committee commission an audit of the school department back in July?
Yes.
And has the School Committee received that audit yet?
Not at this point.
How, when is that expected to arrive? I mean, isn't that a long time?
Where, it, it's been quite extensive, but their report required the extra time. There was discussion that it would be made available by this Wednesday. But we're at this point, I'm asking the city solicitor to speak with them tomorrow so we can get a definite time. And we will give that time to the City Council and the School Committee.
When the School Committee commissioned the audit, did they, in the contract or whatever, was there a, a time at which the audit was supposed to be produced?
I don't believe so. I mean, because we were looking for the, it was information. I mean, it wasn't, we didn't really know how much information they would, they would get at that particular point. We wanted a straight audit, but as the audit identified certain problems, it required extra effort on their part.
Do we know who the auditing firm is that's, who's doing the audit?
The mayor's solicitor. You want?
Yeah, it's Clifton Larson Allen.
Okay. And so is there no time for them to produce the audit? There's not a, I mean, what if they just, what if they don't produce it until January? Are they able to do that? Do we have any, how is that agreement written up with them?
The, the expectation was that they would be completing their audit probably sometime around September. But the, as the mayor had indicated, the field work took longer. They are now completed the field work, and it's anticipated, I think, really in a matter of weeks.
So you don't think it'll be next Wednesday or whatever? The mayor said it's going to be several more weeks? Is that what you?
No. What I was saying is that it's, they're at the point now that it should be in short order. And when you were referencing, what if it doesn't come until January, I don't think that is, is at all what is anticipated, that it should be coming in, in very short order.
Do you expect that we'll get it during the, the School Committee will receive the audit during the month of November?
That would be the expectation, absolutely, yeah.
I would agree with that also.
Back in July, when it was first commissioned, the expectation was that it, we were going to get it in September? Is that right?
It was, they were going to use best efforts, but they also cautioned that until they actually started doing the work, it was difficult to say how long it was going to, to take them. And so I haven't spoken to them directly in several weeks. However, the, I do know that their, their field work is complete, and that's what took a considerable amount of time. They, I think that the, the scope of the services kept growing, frankly, and, and that's also what contributed to more time than what was expected.
Okay. My, my understanding was that it was going to be a, a complete audit. The, the scope of services, wasn't, wasn't that outlined when the audit was commissioned?
It is, but say, for example, it, it isn't necessarily expected that when you go in to do an audit, that data systems haven't been maintained. And, and so if they haven't been maintained, that takes extra time to go in and really examine what information we have, why we don't have current information. So there were instances, it's my understanding from the CFO of the school department, that, say, for example, salaries and where people were on the grid, that information is maintained on the city side and it's up to date, so that everyone is actually earning the salaries that are intended. But that was not, those systems were not maintained on the school side, and nobody really understood that or knew that going into it. And, and in fact, there have been several instances of overpayment to employees as a result.
They made it known to us, I mean, that they were not expecting to find literally whole portions incomplete. So they had to work with the city side and the school side to try to complete their report to make it accurate.
Okay.
So it was supposed to be at the end of September, but the thing is, you know, we've allowed them to continue to ensure that we get the right report, right information.
Okay. But you expect, the School Committee expects to receive that audit in November?
I see no reason why we won't, we won't get it within the next two weeks.
Has, has the auditing firm indicated that they will produce the audit in November? Or are we just anticipating that it'll be?
It was, no, it's discussed that we would get it possibly the thirtieth, thirty-first.
With the auditing firm?
Yes, from the auditing firm, so.
By the thirty-first?
Maybe a week late.
I'm, I'm sorry.
By today or tomorrow.
Okay.
But the issue was it might be another week.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott.
I just want to perhaps explain again the issue with the raises. It's not blaming. It's, it's, I don't fault the union. They're doing what they are supposed to do. They're supposed to go and ask and support their members. My, my point was, amongst other things, that being transportation, that being food service, that being, you know, some, some other, some other issues that are increasing buyback, the major contributing factor because of the load of salaries that has on that budget is significant. The first year is a million dollars, just on, at the tail end of that first year. The, the following year is three million. The impact is three million. So you went from a million plus three to four. The following year is in another three million. So you're talking a seven million dollar impact. We just adopted a raise for one, for a two-year. That's one point six, because that's what we can afford. So that's my only point. I'm not saying it's, it's the sole cause, but when you approve contracts, there are residual impacts, and that, to me, is what's happening. And next year is really quite scary, because I, you know, I, I don't know where they're going to close the six or seven million dollar this year, and on top of load another three million dollar for salaries. So I, I just, I'm not doing the blame game. This is to try to solve the problem and just to, you know, let folks know the causes of it, quite frankly, so.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cirillo, you're all set. Okay. Thank you. Next petitions. Benton Court requests installation of overhanging fabric awning for a takeout restaurant, Luchs, at one three one seven Middlesex Street. I need a motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation.
So moved.
Counsel Conway, second by Counsel Kennedy. Next, by Ms. Barboza, requests installation of four-way stop sign at the intersection of High and Rogers Street. Motion to refer to the Transportation Engineer for a report and a recommendation.
So moved.
By Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Milonazo. Do we have a speaker present that wants to speak? Do you wish to speak on this?
Yes.
Please come up to the, please give your name and address.
Hi, I'm Shari Barboza. I live at four sixty-three High Street, directly across the side of the Moody's School on High Street. I just witnessed an accident, about the fifteenth accident, probably at the intersection of Rogers and High Street, since I moved there in April of two thousand sixteen. My dog was hit, had got out the back in June of two thousand sixteen, and I shortly after requested that this intersection have a four-way stop. The person left the scene. There was about ten people around. I've witnessed numerous hits and runs. I just haven't been able to grab the license plates. I've witnessed massive accidents. People take their lives into their own hands, going out from High Street onto Rogers Street, and people do not yield way to anyone coming off of Rogers Street to High Street and High Street to Rogers Street. The whole intersection is a nightmare also because it's a bus, a school bus hub. The buses let on and let off, and I'm talking masses of amounts of children. There's at least five to ten school buses that all stop there, and no one stops. Ford Hill Park is across the street, as you probably know, and most people who walk their dogs and any children that go over there pass from High Street over Rogers Street, and they are taking their lives in their own hands. I have four children. I don't let them go to Ford Hill Park because it is so dangerous. They, after, two years ago, when I requested for the four-way stop and also for signage just for the speed limit, personally, I think that there should be speed bumps put in in any bad area of Lowell where people are getting hit. But I asked for the four-way, and there were two signs put up pointing to the crosswalk. No one. No one cares. If they cared, they would be slowing down. I'm requesting that these put in along with the speed limit. And the crossing guard there does a superb job, and he has to deal with traffic coming from three different directions. I don't know how he does it. I've been watching it, like I said, for two and a half years, and it's a constant nightmare for everyone. And if you like, I can come back the next time with a petition from probably everyone in that area signed. I just didn't have time to get it together. Do you have any questions for me?
No, the city manager will take this under advisement. City manager?
Yeah, thank you. And, and our traffic engineer is here.
Yes, and I did speak with her. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we will, we will come back with a report.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We have your contact information, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
But thank you for your report. Next, we have motions by the local city council. This first motion by Counsel Leahy, Counsel Noon. Request city manager have proper department check on lighting along river and canal walkways through the city. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself. The next three motions came out of the downtown neighborhood group meeting. And I did speak with somebody from engineering maybe or whatever today. But basically, we just need to go out there when the lights are on, take a look around, see what's out, what's in. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Noon?
Mr. Mayor, I think Jack Moynihan's here. He's probably want to speak on all three motion, I guess, because this come out of the downtown meeting that you were there also, Mr. Mayor.
He was registered for 8.2.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Next, we have 8.2. Counsel Leahy, Counsel Noon. Request city manager have proper department provide a report regarding installation of cameras at intersections in the downtown. And so, we've had two people. Counsel Leahy, do you want to speak, or do you want to allow our speaker to?
Sure. We let the speakers go first if they want to.
Jack Moynihan.
Good evening. Jack Moynihan, 88 Prescott Street. And I also happen to be the co-chair of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. And I want to thank Councillors Noon and Leahy for bringing this, this issue forward. And it's, traffic, pedestrian safety is a frequent topic at, at Downtown Neighborhood Association meetings. And I was also encouraged to see the, the earlier motion responses on the motions by Counsel Mercy and Counsel Leahy. And those, those two issues revolved around people, motorists not stopping at crosswalks, and also problems with people not yielding pedestrians when there are a, when there are walk, walk lights. I believe that's called concurrent phasing of the, the traffic lights. But anyway, but we've been concerned about those. But what's becoming more disturbing is that more and more motorists are not stopping at, at stoplights. Now, I think this may be a societal problem, but, or trend, but it's particularly problematic in, in an area of high, high density of both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So at this point, it's particularly my, my intersection, the one closest to me, at Market, Prescott and Central Street. People are going through while pedestrians are in the, in the crosswalks and just disregarding the, the light. So it's becoming a, it's an extremely dangerous situation. It happens at some other intersections as, as well. But that, in, that particular one that I mentioned is, is bad because there are a lot of elderly people. Well, aside from people like myself, there are a lot of people in, in some of the public housing near there and, and with, you know, motion, dis, motion, motion restricted, who are motion restricted, and some each even in wheelchairs. So this is, I think, a particularly dangerous situation. So I wouldn't suggest trying to ticket people for going through a, a light at 2:00 in the morning after stopping, but maybe that's one more way to, to get people to, to stop. Periodically, the police department does station an officer there, but that only works to a certain degree. I mean, people sometimes drive past the officer while he or she is turned around making the, the notations. So I think the only way for some people who really don't care about others is to have some consequences to, to their actions. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councillors and Manager Donohue and his staff. Thanks for any consideration.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. So this is an issue we've been talking about for years with Chief Davis and so many other police chiefs. And, you know, maybe it's time if we, I did speak to the chief today about it. Maybe we could just figure out, you know, what the cost is, figure out how to pay for them, and if we could start in the downtown area and spread out. And, you know, let's take a look at people who rent the poles and stuff, you know, Verizon and, and things like that, National Grid. If, you know, they've got to chip in too, you know? Costs go up, and their costs should go up to pay for some of this stuff. So, and maybe just the ticketing, some of that will, the violations will help pay for it too. So if we can get a, a good report on that and see where we could gather money from, to pay for these and, and use them throughout the downtown. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, by Counsel Leahy, Noon. Request city manager have transportation engineer provide a report regarding operations of pedestrian crossing in the downtown. Further discussion? Counsel Leahy, Counsel Noon?
Motion speaks for itself. Again, tonight, we had the motions about crossing downtown. So if we could take a look at all the intersections and see how safe it is to cross the intersections. Thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you. Next, by Counsel Elliot. Request city manager have city solicitor prepare a proper vote to change election of city council from nine current at-large councillors to six award and three at-large councillors effective next city election in 2019. Have a second?
Second for discussion.
Counsel Mercy? All right. Before I entertain this motion though, I would like to ask the city solicitor to speak on the appropriateness of the motion because of the lawsuit and because it's in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I want to speak on the motion first.
I, I, I'm asking for a ruling.
Well, I will say that it's up to the member who filed the motion. And I know there's also registered speakers.
I still, still have a right because this, because this motion's in executive session. It's been placed in executive session. We have litigation against the city, and it's important for us to ensure that whatever steps we take, I'm not, you have a right to your motion, what have you, but I want to ensure that we are on safe grounds, and I have the right to go to the city solicitor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with all due, due respect, maybe some of us don't support the litigation.
That's, that's appropriate.
Maybe some of us just want to move forward with the litigation.
I want the, I want the city solicitor to make, to give me a statement regarding this issue. City Solicitor?
Sure. The motion presented before the, the council is one that has jurisdictional challenges. First, this was a subject matter that was given to a subcommittee. And more particularly, this exact subject matter was before the entire council in executive session. The matter has not been released from the executive session. In fact, it was anticipated that there would be future executive sessions to go over some more materials that had been requested. So jurisdictionally, this rests with both the subcommittee as well as the entire city council in executive session. And to that degree, it would not be properly before this council. Secondly, it does pertain to a matter of litigation. And so even if that were not the case, because we are dealing with a matter of litigation, it would be the recommendation of the law department that to have public discussion of something that has, that is a subject matter of litigation could have a detrimental effect on the city's position. And so for that reason also, it would be the recommendation of the law department that this not be discussed publicly. One potential solution to this is the council could always refer the matter to the, to the executive session where the, where the subject matter is, is residing.
Counsel Malinazza?
If, if it's, if it's an order, I would, I would refer the motion to the council of the whole in an executive session.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Counsel Serrillo?
Oh, wait. Motion was made, motion was made.
Motion was made, and I asked, and I asked for?
Motion was made and seconded to have a discussion on the floor. That's the city solicitor's opinion, and it's her opinion. It's not my opinion. It's not, and we are the governing body. So I feel like I'm entitled to speak on this. I don't know what, I don't know why this is behind closed doors. We're going to lose this lawsuit, and it's costing the taxpayers thousands of dollars.
Counsel, you're out of order.
So you could try to stop, no, I'm not out of order.
There was, I have the right to ask the city solicitor.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do. For an opinion.
You ask for an opinion.
Because this is in litigation.
You ask for?
And, and our responsibility is to the city and the taxpayers of this city.
You're darn right it is. And it's going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Madam Solicitor?
The, the chair.
Mr. Mayor, I have the floor.
Recognize?
I have the floor.
I just recognize the solicitor. I'm sorry. I have the right. Go ahead.
So to be, to be clear, the chair determines the course of the meeting and who is going to speak and what is in order and what isn't in order. In this particular case, the chair did request an opinion from the law department. I gave the opinion. A, a motion was made. It was seconded. The amended motion is now before.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. The city solicitor does not run the city.
Is now.
Now to speak.
Maybe she thinks, maybe she thinks she runs the city, but she does not.
She's not?
This governing body does.
You are, 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 sir.
You are usurping power that's not within your jurisdiction.
Clearly not.
This is a motion that was made.
I am trying for the city's sake, for the sake of the city, not to have us in litigation.
That's why this vote is before us.
You have a right to this, but at this point, it was in executive session. It is in litigation, and I have the right to ask the city solicitor, I'll repeat it again, for her opinion in regard to the safety of the city court-wise, all of those issues that could put us in harm's way. You have a right, next, in the executive session, to bring this all up. It can come back up other ways. But the thing is, I am, my job, the way I see it, sir, is to watch out for the city. Watch, ensure that we're on the.
Well, you're not watching out for the city. If this lawsuit continues to go, it's been a year and a half. We heard in executive session how much it's costing us. We've seen what happened with panhandling.
You're releasing information from executive session.
That's right.
That's, that's not, that's not acceptable.
Is it a secret that it's costing us thousands of dollars? What's the secret?
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Counsel Malinazza?
Again, I don't know if the motion's an order, but I would move the Counsel Elliot be censured.
That's not, that's not a.
No, it's, it's out of hand. You're, you're right. You're out of hand. I mean, we had, we've had a, a second motion. I want a roll call on that motion.
Motion go into executive session?
The motion, the motion on the floor was seconded by Counsel Mercy.
Second motion.
Counsel Malinazza?
To go, to refer to executive session, yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Point of information, who made the motion, who seconded it, and what type of motion is it?
Motion was made by Counsel Malinazza.
Seconded by Counsel Serrillo. Counsel Elliot?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Counsel Mercy?
Mr. Mayor, this is my understanding, and I did say to Counsel Elliot that I would second the motion, and I, I'm a person of my words, so why, when I said it. But I believe that the person that runs this meeting is the mayor, and you referred it to the recommendation for an opinion from the solicitor.
That's all I wanted. All I wanted.
And while I heard what went on, I, I know we like to talk and say what we feel on, on mine. I have plenty to say about this issue.
It can be frustrating.
But because it's in litigation, I think it's only fair that we don't discuss it. I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but this is what I feel is in the best interest. And I wish that we weren't being sued, but we did discuss this in executive session. We got an opinion from the solicitor, and I don't want to hurt anybody.
You know that's the role of the mayor.
That's what I think.
Counsel Elliot?
I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this.
Well, I'm not trying to hurt you.
We've seen what happened in, in Springfield. We've seen what happened in, in Lawrence, and it's happening across the country. I'm just trying to protect the taxpayers. That's all it is. I'm not trying to put anyone in a box. I'm not trying to put the city at risk. I've never have, but at some point, we should, we should, this needs to be settled.
Counsel, I agree with you, it has to be settled. But the thing is, you have to admit, as the mayor, I have to ensure, based on the information I have, because it is in executive session, it is litigation, the city solicitor, I mean, it's her opinion, but we have to value her opinion at this point. And you know very well, you have the right in executive session and then beyond that to go to the next levels. But the thing is, we are seeking more information, and I think this matters over. Counsel Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, that's what I think as well. The substitute motion passed.
Yes.
It's been referred to executive session. Any further discussion on this matter should take place in executive session.
Correct. All right. Next, by Counsel Elliot, Counsel Mercy. Request city manager, council have community teamwork present programming being implemented to address youth homelessness in the city. Counsel Elliot, Counsel Mercy, or Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council is represented on the CTI Community Teamwork Board of Directors by Counsel Elliot, Counsel Noon and myself. At last month's meeting, we learnt about youth homelessness, youth adults from ages 18 to 24, who are one of the most vulnerable populations in Lowell and across the state. In mid-June, CTI organized a day-long summit along with community partners to develop a plan to prevent and end youth homelessness in Lowell and address their needs. This motion asks that we invite CTI Executive Director Karen Frederick R., her designee, as one of our future, at one of our future meetings to tell us about the program. I'd also, and, and the reason that Counsel Elliot and I made this motion is because great things are happening, and we don't think that it's a secret. We want to share all that information with the public. And I know that we have a good following on TV, at least I, I would hope so, because we're spreading the word on things that are taking place, and, and very good things that are happening. I'd also like to tell you that CTI got a $10,000 grant to transport clients to drug court. This is a vital service to people who do not have transportation. So we're filling each gap a little at a time that we possibly can. So if Counsel Elliot wants to add to that, we're only creating this motion to be transparent because it's not a secret of the good things that are happening in the city with CTI and different organizations. So that's why we're making this motion.
No, it's a, Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the annual meeting of the Community Teamwork Incorporated, the executive director informed the board that they received a $368,000 grant. And with that, they are putting together a program, there's actually a location on Dutton Street, for youth homeless. They've got, they've secured apartments to try to address it. It's a significant issue in the city. I believe there's around 3,000 homeless youth. So we thought it was important to, to let the public know the, the significance of homelessness with youth in the city and that, that the city is doing something through CTI to address it. So that's, that's the essence of the motion.
No, well, the thing is, this is a good motion. I think Counsel Conway and myself, as former administrators at the high school, homelessness was one of our biggest problems. Great kids that, you know, really suffered. But the thing is, also, I'd just like to point out, Mayor Kennedy last year had a musical, music program, this year, I believe it's November 29th.
27th, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
The, if I could, this is just a perfect opportunity to, last year, we had the, the first annual mayor's holiday fest for, for youth homelessness. This year, the second, the mayor's second annual holiday fest for youth homelessness will take place on November 27th at the Zorba Room over at the Olympia Restaurant on Market Street. It's a wonderful event. It was sold out last year. I would expect that it would be, or hope, hope that it would be sold out this year. Basically, what? Basically, what it is, is about 12 to 15, maybe, maybe more than that musicians and different bands in the city and the local area, not just exclusively to Lowell, but all around, donate their time for one evening and come down and play just a couple of songs each and it ends up being-
Do you want to list some of the bands?
I don't have the list with me, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just remind you that you're the mayor, so you should have the list, not me.
He's right, but the thing is, do you want me to tell about the guy that I brought into?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Play Perry Como's songs? I mean, you know, my groups and your groups are a little different, but we look forward to that program, but thank you for that motion, it's a good motion. Any further discussion? Okay. Counsel Milonazzo, request city manager meet with the representatives of RCN to discuss bringing a second option to residents of, for internet cable and telephone service.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I left a copy of the newspaper article on my colleagues' desks this evening, it ran about 10 days ago in the Revere Advocate and RCN is coming into my, my adopted city in Revere, the second cable television option. And we've often talked on the floor of this council about Vios, bringing Vios to Lowell and they keep refusing to come in and I just think that having the city manager reach out to some of the people that are in this newspaper article that represent and work for RCN, I think makes some sense. So that's the reason for the motion, is just to try to give our residents a second option.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Next, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Counsel Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked to Counsel Milonazzo today and I told him that I, I thought it was a great motion because I'll tell you, to have, you know, to have a monopoly, and I've heard so many people over the years not pleased with what goes on and the constant costs that, that, that it, that incurs. So again, I think it's very, very timely and I think the whole idea of a monopoly is not a good idea. We certainly know that with even going back into the 1890 with Sherman Antitrust Act that they put into place because, let's face it, you have a company in here, we've seen it, we've talked about it before, you got a company that there's no competition, so why try? And at the end of the day, you know, they can raise the prices, the service could be mediocre and the fact is, they still have the contract. And who loses in the long run? It certainly is the citizens of Lowell. So I think, again, I think it's a great motion and I look forward to competition rather monopoly. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Cirillo.